Okay, we're going to go faster.
I don't want to get your eyes.
Families, every day is an absolute blessing and just take a moment for your own reflections to give strength to those who are affected by that tragedy in Wilmington. Thank you as we remember the Lupo family. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, I'm Tom Labange. This is the Arts, Health and Aging Committee of the City Council at the special meeting. Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
There is one item before the committee. That item is the Zoo Department and Bureau of Engineering reports and a city administrative officer to report on various actions related to the proposed elephant pachyderm exhibit at the Los Angeles Zoo.
Very well. I'm informed by the ITA Department of Information Technology that this is being broadcast on our city channel 35. Following the conclusion of this meeting, they will follow the report of the police commission for those who happen to be tuned in at this time. Thank you all very much. We do have cards over here and appreciate it. We have some reports. So let's also state that my colleague, Ms. Han, did attend to business in Wilmington this afternoon along with Mayor Villarogosa. I will be sitting as a committee of one. Ms. Perry went home ill, I believe, if that was told to me correctly at this time. So I will sit as a committee of one. That means all comments that are made today again could be made tomorrow in council. When a council member sits alone, public comment then is granted during the period of time and it's heard by the full council, which is scheduled to be heard tomorrow. That being said, it will be up to the president of the city council to determine the length of the public comment period and anyone who has to express themselves, I will listen to them, but also they can express themselves to the full body as well tomorrow. So before us is the Zoo Department and Bureau of Engineering's report and the CAO's report, that's the city administrative officer, to various actions involving the pachyderm exhibit at the Los Angeles Zoo. If we could have some reports from the various representatives of the government, including the CAO, city engineer, zoo director, if you want to take these chairs. You can take that chair around there. So, Madam Clerk, what's we're going to be calling on one?
Excuse me?
Yeah, right, just to answer, I want to get reports first. And if you could, Madam Clerk, and I thank you for your help in this endeavor here, and the items of A, B, C, and D, is that correct? Let's take item A first.
So, so that associated with transferring the remaining elephant at the zoo.
Thank you. And you can turn that one around. If you'd state your name and your department.
Ray, Your Honor, Office of City Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Ray.
John Lewis, General Manager of the Zoo.
Gary Moore, City Engineer, Bureau of Engineering.
Thank you. To the costs related to this, would you like to have a report?
Sure. We actually released a report just yesterday, just providing, just sort of a little update on the costs, where we are with the project and then potential replacement. You know, if we were to decide to cancel this project and we go forward with a different project, we provided some estimates based on some data that we got from both the zoo and from BOE. Certainly, part of the discussion has to do with the total cost of the project, $42 million, and the Mikla component, the $14 million. Along with that discussion, there's, it also had to do with some of the reversible costs, or should say, some of the monies from the Prop A to NCC as well. To sort of provide you with an update, we did receive a letter from the county asking us that if we were to cancel the project, that they would seek reimbursement or repayment, I should say, of the monies that we have spent within 60 days.
Very good.
Once we were...
And that total to the county?
I'm sorry?
That total to the county?
It would be roughly about $5 million. And those are those monies that we've spent thus far. Now, I do have to let you know that certainly if the project is canceled and we decide to go forward with something else, that there is a reapplication process and we may get that money back. But at this point, they've asked us that if we were to stop, we would like that check from, they would like that check from us.
And the funding for this project comes from the county proposition for parks, County Y?
A2, that's correct.
1992?
Yes, this is that A2 money. This is roughly just shy of $12 million.
Right, and then the other funding comes from the zoo bond issue?
There is a zoo bond issue, that's right. The Prop CC, roughly about $8.5 million. Thus far, we do have money that was raised by GLAZA.
Right.
As reported earlier, it's $5 million, though that number, as I understand, has gone up a little bit. We had money that was in the zoo trust fund and then, as proposed, there was the Mikla funding as well.
And Mikla funding uses general fund obligations?
That's correct.
Basically, for the public, it's our credit card?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay, good. Thank you very much. Mr. Lewis, on this A here, costs associated with transferring Billy, our elephant, to an animal sanctuary or any other facility, I would like to ask that question if that is the case. If you could give me a report from the zoo's perspective?
Sure. Mr. Chair, we, the zoo contacted Pat Derby of the Paws Sanctuary in Northern California to follow up on, two years ago, her organization had presented some details for, at that time, potentially taking three elephants from the zoo, and we wanted to follow up on those numbers. My staff talked to her directly on the phone, and if we were to move Billy to the Paws Sanctuary, she is saying at this point that it would take about $2 million to prepare a facility for Billy, and that it would take her about three months, once they receive the money. In other words, they want the money upfront, three months to prepare that facility. In addition to that, we're estimating...
They could build a facility in three months?
That's what they said, that they would have it done in three months.
Who's the city engineer at Paws? All righty, thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
There were a couple of other things related to that. I mean, there is transportation costs of about $18,000. We got that from the animal hauler that we use to take Ruby to Paws, updated. It's a little flexible depending on cost of fuel at the time and how much Billy actually weighs, you know, the taxes on the road and so forth. And then the last thing, if I may, and I spoke to this last time, if we were to send Billy to the sanctuary, there is a potential cost to the zoo regarding our AZA accreditation. We participate in a full participation process with our association for animals managed by the Species Survival Plan, and so for us to send him to the sanctuary, we would first have to get the association to declare him surplus to the North American population. We did this with Billy, or excuse me, with Ruby before she went to Paws. If they choose not to declare him surplus and we send him to Paws anyway, or any other institution outside of the AZA population, then our zoo and some staff may be subject to sanctions from the association.
If there was another location other than Paws, is the Zoo Department investigating any of that?
We have, through the association, and have been given the reassurance that there are institutions out there that would be willing to consider taking him, which would probably mean either them covering the cost of transportation or we would split it with them. I would guess that at that time, we'd probably place Billy there on a loan so the city would still retain ownership of him, just so we have more control over his care and future.
Very good. So, Madam Clerk, what are we going to ask that this then be, this section here, be sent to council as an information matter tomorrow so the council could decide on what they feel they would like to do as it relates to this?
Okay, so the committee is recommending to note and file this report.
Correct, on A.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you'd like to add on that? I will be taking public comment at the end of all the reports through how I sit today. Item two, if you could articulate that there?
Item B of the first item is relative to alternative uses for the exhibit.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. In working with the Zoo Department, we went ahead and looked at some preliminary assumptions of what we would use, the site where the proposed pachyderm forest exhibit is scheduled to be completed in construction. What we did is, working with Mr. Lewis and the Zoo Department, we said you convert, the assumptions were, convert the existing elephant's temporary yard, which is approximately half acre, into a rhinoceros yard, and replace the temporary elephant shelter with the rhinoceros' barn. We said leave the new Sarus crane and monteck exhibit and viewing visitor area, but we replace the interpretive graphics. We would then convert the existing elephant barn into a hippopotamus exhibit, installing a new water filtration system to the existing pool and increasing the existing yard to at least a third of an acre. Fourthly, on the remaining site, we would provide a new giraffe exhibit with a new giraffe barn and add a second animal barn for hoof stock and other animal exhibits. And finally, with the multiple exhibits, we would have to include visitor pathways, viewing areas, and landscaping as necessary. Based on those assumptions, we consulted with the consultant cost estimator that is currently under contract with the Bureau of Engineering. We also contacted a former designer that we've worked with who designed the red ape exhibit to inquire about costing to do this. And finally, the Zoo Department also assisted us in contacting some other zoos. When we did this, we found that the cost to build these addition, to build this proposed alternative there, the cost ranging for the Bureau of Engineering, working with our cost estimator, was approximately $34 million, working with the designer...
$34 million, that's, if I was to just stop right now, so if you're going to try to create something for the future, it'd be $34 million.
Right, and that includes the construction, contingency, design, inspection, project management, and construction management. So a total project cost of just over $34 million. Working with the designer who had designed the red ape exhibit, he had estimated per acre costs, we interpolated it out, and it came between $35 and $39 million to build those, the new exhibitory. And finally, in working with the Zoo Department and some of their surveys, the cost ranged from about $24 million to $70 million. So once again, the cost, once again, we haven't done, you know, we laid out the alternatives and we talked to people and so forth, but the cost, we, the Bureau of Engineering was about $34 million, the designer was $35 to $39, and then, working with the zoo and other zoo departments, it was between $23 and $70. So that gives you some preliminary information.
And you spoke about the rhino yard and the hippo barn, hippo yard area, and the giraffe. You didn't give an acreage for the giraffes.
It would be basically, the giraffe and a second animal would use the rest of the area, so it'd be around four acres or so.
For the giraffe?
And the second animal. I believe that's correct.
But they would...
Yes, four acres.
Four acres. Do you know in any of your research, because one of the challenges that we have here is some feel that the space that we have created for the elephants is too small, okay? I like space, we all like space. What would, what would be the response to a half acre rhino yard, a third acre hippo area, a less than four acre, because there's nothing that's four acres out there now, Gary, your math is, unless you're doing something drastically different, because I've been pushing all I can to get extra space for the elephants. Right now, we're at three, I don't know what we're actually at.
And I'm sorry, I should have, thank you, Councilman, for the clarification on that, four acres. That would include the walking paths and the barns, there'd be a giraffe barn, and there would be a second animal barn.
So let's say the giraffe would be, have two acres, two and a half acres?
I just want to confirm.
I'm not going to hold you to it, but, two and a half acres.
Yeah, thanks, John.
So what would make, what would make those who feel differently than I have felt, you know, that I feel strong, that the space that we're creating will be good for elephants? Now, I'd love more space, I'd love more space, but that's what we have. What would stop the same advocacy that the hippo, the barn, the rhino, the barn, the giraffe, the barn, would not be enough for those animals? Or do you know that answer?
I don't know that answer, I did not research that answer.
Right, so that is an answer that we'd have to ask, because I wouldn't want to, if we do not have the space, you know, to go into a situation. But, I have a difference of a feeling on that as well. So, Mr. CEO, you want to comment on anything? A B or Mr. Lewis? Okay. And what's the timeframe on this would be? This is, because right now, it's 2009.
Well, the first thing we would be do, the total process from, through design, requesting, a request for qualifications for design, designing, bidding and awarding and constructing it, is probably looking at five years. One of the things we'd have to do is, you'd have to do an initial study of probably $100,000 to actually detail out all these areas here.
And in the five years that it would take to do, what would it take to finish the exhibit that we have stopped right now?
The construction contract, once we start, is, the duration of the construction contract for phase three on the bids that have been received is 18 months or...
Just to repeat the question...
So the question was, how long will it...
Repeat the question, repeat the answer.
Yeah. We've assumed that it'll take two years to complete the next phase of the construction once it starts.
So there would be an additional three years on that if we had stopped, when we stopped and we go forward on?
And once again, with all capital projects, you know, when we get into detailed design, I mean, we would, we would try to optimize the time, but it's difficult to say without the full scope at this time, but that's what we would estimate at this time.
But a large portion of the zoo, the middle of the zoo is torn up and not an experience that's pleasant for anybody. Okay. Thank you very much. Now, could I have, that concludes B, could I have C?
And the disposition of B?
This would be note and bring it to council, same ways as the committee of one.
As A, note and file.
Right, note and file.
The Bureau of Engineering report.
Right.
Okay, and item one C is relative the status of elephant exhibits throughout the United States.
This is mine.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Councilman, we, again, our staff spent some time talking to other zoos in our association, and I think at this point, what we can report from our report is, we looked at the 12 cities that have closed their elephant exhibits, as has been stated, as well as six that plan on closing their facilities. What we have found is that there are, since 1991, there's been 12 institutions in the United States. I think three of those are non-AZA zoos, the remainder are AZA accredited institutions that have closed their exhibits, and we also agree that there's another six that are planning to close their exhibits when their current elephants pass away. In other words, they're committed to those elephants and will keep them until the end of their life, perhaps, when they're down...
So that's 12 and six, is 18?
No, yes.
Okay.
Those six institutions that are planning to phase out their elephant exhibits hold a total of 13 elephants currently, and so as their elephants pass away, they'll close away, close their exhibits. However, what we've also found is currently there are 74 AZA institutions that are exhibiting either Asian or African elephants. That includes the six that plan to phase their facilities out. Nine have opened brand-new exhibits in the last 10 years, six have recently expanded their exhibits, and 18 are planning to expand exhibits. Four says here are planning brand-new exhibits, so in other words, they currently have elephants, but they're going to build new exhibits. So I think from our perspective, while there are a few institutions, and I think we've included some letters from some of those institutions that state why they have decided to close their exhibits, typically it's in smaller institutions that, for financial reasons, have decided not to continue with elephants but focus on other species, but the majority of those institutions in the AZA at least, that are currently housing elephants, intend to keep elephants in there, are doing things to improve their facilities and expand their herds. As to trends of elephant exhibits, we also found through surveys that have been conducted by the AZA as well as our own survey, two years ago, actually, it was going on the last time the council was considering this issue, as part of a, kind of a visitor service questionnaire, one of the questions was, and I want to quote it here, "Would you like to see a new elephant exhibit at the zoo?" And out of 1,205 visitors responding, 90.7% said yes, 9.3% said no. So based on our surveys and the surveys done by our association, the public tells us they want to see elephants in our institutions. AZA institutions are responding to that, and the trend seems to be to keep elephants in our association.
How many elephants are in the United States, would you estimate, in AZA zoos? Total Asian and/or African?
Jenny or Jason, do you know that number? Total elephants in AZA institutions?
Total elephants.
Total elephants?
Two eighty-four.
I'm being told two eighty-four, but I can double-check that number.
Two hundred and eighty-four?
I believe that's correct.
Total elephants in the United States?
Asian and Africa in AZA institutions.
Right. How many others would you guess, would you, it's hard to guess?
I don't have a guess, sir, I'm sorry.
How, and in the, in the wilds of Asia, in the wilds of Africa?
The estimate for Asian elephants right now is ranging between 28,000 and 32,000 across Southeast Asia. African elephants, I believe, are being estimated about quarter of a million remaining throughout Africa.
All right, and if I could, I think the council would be interested, I'm just, it reminds you, if someone from your staff...
Finalize those numbers, yeah.
Could get general population, general population in the last 50 years as man has encroached in developed areas. Is there anything else you'd like to add to this, Mr. Lewis?
No, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, you could note and file, is that be correct there?
Okay, we'll note and file the zoo report.
Thank you. Would you call out D, please?
Item one D is a city administrative officer report relative to alternative options for funding the exhibit.
Thank you.
Okay. As, I wanted to serve this a little bit over you when we first started, we have been, staff has been working with the city attorney and actually GLAZA as well. We were asked to work with them to find out whether or not there were some alternative funding sources in lieu of the Mikla funds, the city Mikla funds, this is that $14 million or so.
This is the Greg Smith motion?
Yes, yes. Yep, thank you. And with that, we have sat down with GLAZA, and actually, they have, I believe, the latest proposals, they've offered up $6 million in addition to their $5 million. That $6 million would offset that $14, would leave the remaining $8 million as, as far as a general fund obligation at this point. There were, if I would just sit back a little bit, part of what, the whole discussion on the Mikla funds, it's, it's money that we would put out, and then we'd be paying debt service for the next 20 years. That total cost is roughly about $24 million. When we first approached GLAZA, was asking, well, can you assume the debt service over that period of time? And we were proceeding down that path, and they were working to obtain a letter of credit or some financing to basically say, look, we are a valid organization, we can move forward, and we could assume that obligation with, assuming we enter into contractual obligation or term sheet with GLAZA. I believe the most recent proposal, actually, they were saying, well, we can, we can secure another $6 million upfront to offset that $14. The remaining piece then is the eight.
This is a letter that the CAO has always received, I imagine?
Yes, it looks like it's dated today.
From?
From GLAZA, yes.
Want to read it for the record?
Sure. Basically, GLAZA proposing the following for consideration by the city. Should the city wish to reduce its total Mikla indebtedness for the pachyderm forest project in lieu of restricting two to three years worth of debt service payments from GLAZA's unrestricted endowment, GLAZA is willing to make an upfront payment of $6 million at the time of permanent financing, thereby reducing the overall Mikla principal to just slightly under $8.5 million or less. GLAZA is stating they will continue to honor its commitment to pay for the reduced Mikla principal and interest along the same terms as set forth in Attachment A, which is not attached, but I believe that has to do with the term sheet. That was Attachment A in our report.
And they have worked with your office, the city attorney's office?
That's correct.
Is there a city attorney who reviewed this here?
[inaudible].
If I could have a city attorney? Have you heard what we were just talking about? For the record, state your name.
My name is Dove LaSalle, I'm an assistant city attorney.
Right, okay, so you have been working with, we were asking, we're on item D, report to alternative options to fund this exhibit?
Yes.
It's the interest of the chair of the Committee of Arts and Parks, it's the interest of the councilman who represents this district, it's the interest of someone who cares deeply about the zoo, to see that this project go forward, but understanding the council's position of this severe economic crisis that we're in, are there alternatives to fund this? And it's the interest of this councilman, that the benefit of the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association, for over 30 years that have had impact on the life of the zoo, of enhancing the zoo experience for all, that they step up to the plate, which they have, with this document and other documents, you've met with them. What I and other council members need to hear, if we are to move forward, is that this is a document that the city could live with, this is an exceptional commitment, and there's a mechanism that allows this to go forward, similar to what the Library Foundation did to enhance the library when it was burnt twice in a horrible fire in 1986, and other types of foundations that support the city. This is what I need to hear from you, that this is a viable option that the council could consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Generally, I would defer on this matter to the attorneys in my office, who are the financial services and bond lawyers. I have been asked this question, I have reviewed some of the GLAZA documents. From a legal perspective, we can have a third party pay our debt, however, the major question becomes, if they don't, it is still a city obligation, obviously. I think the way we were approaching this is that we would enter into a contract with GLAZA and get as many assurances as we can, so that in fact, the city can rely on GLAZA's position based on their history in raising money for the city, that they can, in fact, they will, and they have the ability to make this debt payment, so that the chances that the city will have to pay it will be minimized.
You feel strong, you would recommend to the city, based on documents that you or your lawyers have reviewed, that you could recommend this as an option that they could vote on at this time?
Well, this is an option. What we have is a term sheet. The term sheet would obviously have to be turned into a contract, and GLAZA has indicated in writing and on the attachment to the CAO report, that they would be willing to enter into such a writing within 30 days after any council action to move forward with this.
Okay, very good. And as the CAO, how do you feel that someone comes to the table with this type of commitment in this crisis of economic challenges?
Obviously, in this day and age, and certainly the recent economic events, it is quite a commitment. As we look at other fundraising arms and agencies across the community, many of these fundraising organizations and so forth, they have a very difficult time. The funds are simply just drying up. For them to step up certainly shows and demonstrates their commitment to seeing this project through.
And it would have an impact on the general fund in a positive way?
It would alleviate us from future debt service, that's correct.
Through the whole life of the project?
As, as long as the term sheet is signed and there's a commitment, yes.
As long as the term sheet is signed and there's a commitment, yes, it would.
Basically, that would mean that the real cost, the Mclough funds, would be 100% paid for by the Glazza, or would the debt service only?
It would be the debt service.
Right. So whatever your credit card charge would be, that's 100%. And this is unusual, isn't that, in your time? How long you been with the CAO's office?
Nine years, but yes, this is a unique circumstance.
Have you known of any other organization to step up this big?
No, I'm not aware of.
Right. Good. Have you, Mr. Moore, you're an experienced city engineer on these projects, you know of anybody ever step up that big?
No, sir.
Okay. So this is very important, is there representative of Glazza here at this time? Who would like to speak to this, if you would? If you could just, for the record? Thank you, Doug, if you could give that chair. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Huh? Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you could identify yourself for the record and state your positions with the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association?
Connie Morgan, president.
Jeb Bonner, vice president and chief financial officer.
And if the president could state the commitment of the organization?
Our commitment, and Jeb is here with me as our CFO to assist in this matter, is to commit six million to the Pachyderm Forest at the time that, before you issue your Mclough funds, as you near that time that you issue them, and to reduce the Mclough need to eight and a half million, and then we will service that debt.
Very well.
Glazza has raised over fifteen million dollars for the master plan over the last several years. We've raised additional millions for bond proposition support, interim financing costs, exhibitory and furniture, as well as ongoing improvements to zoo facilities. Since 2005, Glazza has received cash and immediate pledges of over six million dollars to its endowment. Glazza was instrumental in obtaining thirteen point nine million of Proposition O funds for improvements to the zoo's parking infrastructure. Annually, Glazza provides nearly four million dollars of support to the zoo through membership and concessions transfers, restricted support for animal and plant programs, exhibit improvements, conservation and education programs, marketing and general support. And in the last ten years, we have provided over four million dollars of visitor amenities improvements. So we believe that we-
If I could ask the CAO to hear this, if you would, because I want the CAO, if you could hear this as well, I'm sorry for staff, I just want the CAO to hear this, because this is the big issue with many members of council.
Just repeat, might I?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Glazza has raised and transferred fifteen thousand sixty-three thou, fifteen million sixty-three thousand three hundred and three dollars to the city for the Winnicke Family Children's Zoo, Children's Discovery Center, Campo Gorilla Reserve, and Pachyderm Forest. In addition to this direct support of the zoo's master plan, Glazza has raised and spent additional millions on bond proposition support, interim financing costs, exhibitory and furniture, as well as ongoing improvements to zoo facilities, which are not a part of the zoo's master plan, including the Papiano Play Park and new state-of-the-art equipment for the Gottlieb Animal Health and Conservation Center. Since 2005, Glazza has received cash and immediate pledges of over six million dollars to its endowment. Additionally, Glazza was instrumental in obtaining thirteen point nine million dollars of Proposition O funds for improvements to the zoo's parking infrastructure. Annually, Glazza provides nearly four million dollars of support to the zoo through membership and concessions transfers, restricted support for animal and plant programs, exhibit improvements, conservation and education programs, marketing, and general operations. Glazza also oversees visitor amenities at the zoo and has invested over four million dollars of capital improvements since 1997. All of these indicate to us that we have the ability to provide the debt service, which covers both the interest and the principal payments for up to fourteen million, fourteen and a half million dollars of the Mclough debt.
Thank you. And you believe within thirty days, or soon after, forty-five days, you could get an agreement and contract with our city attorney?
We do.
We do.
We do. Thank you very much. Mr. CAO, if you could sit back. So the recommendations, if you were to go forward on this, would be to the CAO and your report here? Could you read those for the record?
Sure. Actually, we have five recommendations. Number one is to complete the exhibit at the zoo, accept Glazza's offer to pay the Mclough debt service of fourteen five, thereby eliminating the future general fund contribution for the debt service. Instruct our office to provide basically the debt schedule reflecting a ten or a twenty year repayment period to ensure that they're part of the contract that's drawn up between the city and Glazza. Approve the provisions in the attached term sheet and authorize the zoo director to then execute that term sheet, and then authorize the city attorney and the zoo director to negotiate and execute a contract with Glazza, reflecting the provisions that are in within that term sheet.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we're going to, again, because of how the committee is sitting today, we will forward this to city council?
Correct.
For tomorrow's consideration? And it'll be forwarded as a note and file?
Is the committee chair recommending approval of the CAO recommendations?
I certainly would. I want to approve it, but as I sit with one, what is our options?
The chair can recommend any recommendations that he would prefer.
Maria Cardenas, thank you, Maria.
Yeah, I think we'd like to add one recommendation.
Okay.
We'd recommend that-
For the record, state your name.
Maria Cardenas, with the CAO's office Municipal Facilities Division.
What high school did you go to?
John Marshall High School.
All right, good, thank you. Do you know why the Liberty Bell has a crack in it?
The barristers?
It cracked at John Marshall's funeral. So interesting. I don't know if the Panthers at Franklin High knew that, Mike. Okay. Thank you.
We recommend that, recommendation number two, be amended to reflect, to give the council the option to accept Glazza's offer of six million dollars at the time of project completion, reducing the Mclough issue for this project to eight and a half.
So this is accept the Glazza offer number two to pay Mclough debt service of fourteen four seven four nine, excuse me. Would be the same report if I'm reading off the same report here?
We would add language to say, or.
Or.
Yes.
Okay, if you could read that for the record for the clerk?
Right. Or, should the city wish to reduce its total Mclough indebtedness for the Pachyderm Forest project, Glazza would make a six million dollar contribution at the time of project completion, which would thereby reduce Mclough debt to eight point five million dollars.
Very well. You have that, madam clerk?
Yes, I do, thank you.
You can put that in writing. Thank you very much. Very good. So we're going to recommend approval of that.
Of the CAO's recommendations as amended.
Right, as amended. Okay, that completes the reports that we have. Now, we have speaker cards for the exhibit and against the exhibit, and general information. So we're going to call on this here. See, my colleague, Mr. Cardenas is here. Mr. Cardenas, do you want to make any statement?
Sure.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to have my public comment because of the situation, one minute. I'm going to allow my colleague what would be a six-minute presentation due to his opposition to what the chair feels, but this is our protocol. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for affording me this opportunity. I'd just like to start off by clarifying something. It was earlier mentioned by Mr. Lewis, who heads the LA Zoo, that the Paws, Pat over at the Paws Sanctuary up north in Northern California, would need two million dollars to take Billy in. I did talk to Pat Derby personally just a few days ago, and she mentioned that it would be about one point three million dollars that she would need. Within twenty-four hours of that conversation, Bob Barker spoke to Pat Derby and also submitted a letter that I'd like to submit for the record for this committee to go along with the file, and it is a letter from Bob Barker clearly stating that he has now committed, and this letter's dated January 22nd, he's committed one point five million dollars to the Paws Sanctuary, so that they can accept Billy. The, in addition to that, I'm hoping that the chairman would ask of Glazza, because it's important to the city, we're going to partner on anything, especially on a twenty year commitment, if the chairman would please ask Glazza to state and submit for the record in writing their balance of their endowment before and after the commitments as stated to this committee today, because that is very relevant to those kinds of long-term multimillion dollar commitments. In addition to that, I'd like to also state for the record that by my research, it shows that sixty-three elephants have died in North American AZA accredited zoos since 2000, and I needed to clarify that to this committee, because all too often rhetorically in the press and in committee and council, some people have said that the zoos of today are different than the zoos of the 1970s and 60s and 80s, and less elephants have issues in zoos than today. Quite frankly, things have gotten a little better, but by and large, from my research, it's still a big issue with elephants being in confined spaces. Also, what I'd like to do is also point out that, I don't know if this has been submitted for the record to this committee, but that is from the city engineer, the breakdown of the money that has been spent so far, and the money that has been utilized so far for this, what is called the Pachyderm Forest exhibit, and I'd like to make sure that, if you would, Mr. Chairman, make sure that that's part of the record as well, because a lot of these numbers were discussed in council and were discussed, here you go, they were discussed in council and they were discussed in the committee in the past, and those numbers have changed a little bit somewhat, and based on the city attorney's expertise, and they're continuing to cull over those numbers. In addition to that, I'd like to point out that the city attorney's report to this committee dated January 23rd does state the outside projected schedule anticipated of five years, but with all due respect, I think it's important that the taxpayers and the committee and everybody understand that there's a high timeline and a low timeline, and it is not five years steadfast, but it is potentially five years based on practical experience, but it could be shorter, and we have in fact experienced that on projects like this in the past. In addition to that, I think it's wonderful that the document dated January 22nd, the report back to this committee, signed by Mr. John R. Lewis, the zoo director, points out that if you take what I count as thirty-six animals, which includes rhinoceros, hippo, giraffe, gazelles, wildebeest, ostrich, and points out that the food costs, et cetera, the overall cost for maintenance of these animals in a given year would be about seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. But what this does not point out, like I would like to point out for the record, is that all of that appears to be animals that are already being, that are already part of the current budget. So this seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is not in addition to the current expenditures of the zoo, but just a reiteration of what they're paying for these animals already for their care. In addition to that, just below that on that document, it says this versus four hundred nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars to manage for elephants. Well, the fact of the matter is, it does not point out that that would be an increase of three additional elephants, and the vast majority of four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars is not part of this current budget at the zoo, should they add elephants to the exhibit. In addition to that, I was hoping to hear a little bit more today in the professional comments about the health and welfare and status of elephants in zoos, as various elephant experts, not general experts, but various elephant experts have submitted for the record to the general council, and also have gone to the Los Angeles Zoo, I've attended with some of them, and they actually have stated their opinion that this exhibit, although it would be stated three and a half acres of roaming space for the elephants, with all due respect, I think it's important that we get the actual record of actual roaming space. For example, I was out there the other day, and Mr. John Lewis was a gentleman, that he walked me through the potential future exhibit, and there are some pieces of those acreage that are not directly accessible to elephants, and they can roam around it, but they cannot roam in it. So that, by all technical terms, should not be included as roaming space for the elephants. So we really are talking about roaming space vastly less than three acres for potentially as many as ten elephants. And I state for the record, the reason why I mentioned ten elephants, is because it has been stated on the record from people at the zoo, that potentially the barn, the six million dollar barn, would in fact accommodate up to ten elephants, young and old. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Now, at this time, I have a public comment, as I mentioned. Madam Clerk, there will be an opportunity for public comment on this issue tomorrow, correct? So there will be a decision made by the President of City Council on this. We have a number of cards, I'm going to ask you to make a one-minute comment. If you need to finish your sentence, please do. I'm going to call for those who are against this exhibit at the zoo first, and I don't have any particular order, but I hope I pronounce your name correctly. Linda Guillory Gibbity David Rutaya, yeah, and also Marilyn Russell, if you could stand, and then we could do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with Betty White that conditions at the Los Angeles Zoo have improved markedly since 1975. But what is the legacy of the future? Will we cling to the antiquated model of the past that is inhumane and embarrassing? Or shall we join the ranks of the enlightened cities, recognizing that sound stewardess, stewardship of the largest land mammal on earth does not include captivity? I urge that we stop work on the enclosure and make a decision to exclude elephants from the zoo here and after. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. David, please.
In the balancing of the options available, costs, space, that kind of thing, how do we value the suffering of the elephants in this equation? Universally, the way we penalize people is by restricting their freedom of movement. I submit to you that freedom of movement is a very strong fundamental need, not only for humans, but for all animals. We've had experts telling us that the proposed space is not large enough. So as the options are weighed, great deference must be given to the suffering of the elephants confined under this proposal. Billy's staying would be such an injustice, I predict that there will appear another crack in the Liberty Bell.
Hi, Marilyn.
My name is Marilyn Russell. It is good that we are beginning to realize that animals are beings with feelings and do not exist solely for our entertainment. It would be wonderful if Los Angeles could be a forerunner in this direction. It is not a valid argument to say that because we have already wasted some money on a project that will not solve the space problem, we should proceed and spend a lot more money in order to complete it. To witness Billy with his pitiful head bobbing motions is to witness an animal that is suffering. The LA Zoo can afford a full-page ad in the LA Times, but Billy does not have that option. I urge the council to vote against continuing the Pachyderm Forest, and instead to allow Billy to live his remaining life in peace at the Paws Sanctuary.
Thank you very much. Heather Carson Malathy Ramja, forgive me, and Carla Iowa? Please.
I live here downtown at the brewery, a member of this community. The issue of rebuilding libraries was raised and funds for that being allocated. Those are foundational to a civilized culture. Keeping wild animals in cages for entertainment is not. I wonder if people know that when poachers in the wild capture baby elephants, that in order to separate a baby from its mother, they must kill the mother elephant. There is absolutely no way to separate a baby elephant from its, from its mother. The mothers are left to die, and the babies are brought to be put in exhibits. I move that we do not continue with this exhibit with private funds, with public funds.
Thank you very much.
I was one of the gullible public that voted- I was one of the gullible public that voted for the zoo bond some years ago, and it was presented as making the zoo more humane for all its animals. Who could argue with that? I did not vote for extending the captivity of one species to its detriment. It is also time to clear up some misconceptions being put out by the LA Zoo. Billy will not be castrated at the sanctuary. The elephant exhibit at the zoo is 3.6 acres subdivided into four, not six acres as reported by some media. Billy and any future companions would have less space than he has at present. In contrast, Billy will have at least 20 acres at the sanctuary. Work at the elephant exhibit has involved demolition, clearing, and grading, and one small half-acre pen has been constructed. LA County has indicated that they are willing to work with the city on a more humane alternative, and the bond money would be returned to the zoo bond accounts for other needs at the zoo. Gita and Tara died horribly less than four years ago, under the zoo's supposedly enhanced medical care and round-the-clock monitoring. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Kala Ayer. What can I say? There has been arguments on both sides. Enough has been said. All I've come here to do is to plead on behalf of Billy. We cannot compare the expanding of a library to expanding the elephant exhibit. Let us not forget that there's an emotional, intelligent fellow being involved here. Let Billy go free. Let him have the space to walk around, not just an expansion from two acres to four acres. Let him lead an almost normal, free elephant life. Let us send him to the sanctuary, end the slavery, end the cycle of trapping and viewing. Let helping Billy get out, be, and be free, be a lesson on compassion to our children. Let us show them a new way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patty Schember, Bill Hurley, and Karen. Thank you very much, Karen Bonadillo. Very good, Karen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Labonge.
Hello.
This proposed exhibit will be inhumane and probably fatal for elephants, but there are many other animals who would greatly benefit from the larger spaces you've discussed. Contrary to what is being said, union jobs would not be lost, nor the monies allocated to the zoo. The Asian elephant is an endangered species who needs help, not harm, from all over the world at this critical time. The wildlife experts and real conservationists have concluded from decades of scientific research that elephants suffer and die prematurely in zoos, as they have in our zoo, and that breeding programs in zoos are costly, unsuccessful, and actually undermine real conservation. They suggest that zoos, quote, "slow down on the breeding and importation of them." Let me repeat that. They suggest that zoos slow down on the breeding and importation of elephants. So the Pachyderm Forest is actually becoming part of the problem and not the solution. I ask you to, as the saying goes, think globally, act locally, and please close this exhibit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Labonge. I'm Billy Hulting from Van Nuys, California. I'm a proud member of Tony Cardenas's district. I'm going to try to address just the points on the meeting today, because my friends will cover everything else. Have you ever heard the phrase, "It's as beneficial, teaching a child not to squish a bug is as beneficial to the child as it is to the bug"? I think this applies greatly here. We talk about alternate exhibits for that space. Why don't we join some of the other progressive zoos in the United States, the 12 others and the six that are reducing their elephant exhibits or getting rid of them, and lead the country explaining, having exhibits that teach children why we don't keep elephants in captivity anymore? Because it's cruel. We know, all know what happens to them. We can ignore it, or we can look at other things, but the fact is, they die here. How many since 2000? I think we should, you know, address that. Join the other progressive zoos. LA should be a leader in this field, not following and not deal with antiquated things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, Tom.
Hi, Karen.
How are you?
Okay.
These are the words of Dr. Joyce Poole, Ph.D., the number-one expert of elephants in the world. The planned exhibit at your zoo will allow some 3.5 acres of access for elephants. Billy's portion will amount to double the space he has now, but doubling, tripling, or quadrupling Billy's enclosure will make little difference to his life. Billy's plight is not only about space, but about what is possible within a given space. Billy needs a chance to search for his own food, to roam on soft surfaces for hours, to interact with a large range of companions, to make his own choices, and that is only possible in a space much larger than a city zoo can offer. He needs natural stimuli to keep fit, and a healthy mind and body, something not possible in either the current or the proposed LA Zoo exhibits. And I just want to say that we, we know that in the movie Forrest Gump, you never know what you get in a box of chocolates. With elephants in zoos, we do. They get ill, they get sick, with abnormal behavior like Billy's bobbing, and I've had it. Let's stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin Redau, Arthur Russell, Ron Friedman. Erin of Hillside Avenue, is that correct?
Leider.
Is that the correct way to, Ryder? Arthur Russell, Ron Friedman. And you are?
Yeah.
Oh, I thank you, Mr. Russell. Yes.
Thank you.
You can state your name if you'd like.
Erin Leider, L-E-I-D-E-R.
To 60.
There is a, there is a long legacy of the zoo of fiscal irresponsibility and cruelty to animals. The fiscal irresponsibility at this time is almost frightening, given our current economic climate. I would ask you, sir, and I would ask Mr. Lewis, how many, how many golden monkeys currently live in a grand-new $9 million Golden Monkey exhibit? The answer is zero. 20% into the construction of that exhibit, this council and that zoo knew there would be no golden monkeys to be had for that exhibit, and yet the money was spent anyways, in the hope that one day it would happen. It is horrible and fiscally irresponsible, and it continues. When you folks approved the $42 million for this exhibit, Gita lay dying, and she died four months later, under horrible conditions and horrible care. Every single person that you have brought up as an expert here has lied two and a half years ago when you approved this. She, they knew she was dying, and no one said a word about it. I want to know how many MICLA funds are currently not available to help children in our city, and how much MICLA funds could be done to help people? Enough is enough. Please stop it.
Thank you very much. Ron Friedman.
Good afternoon. Supporters of the LA Zoo's elephant enclosure say the elephant exhibit is educational. What a perverse argument. What do these exhibits teach our children? That we can pen up majestic animals in unsuitable environments, to the point where an elephant at the zoo right now, Billy, is believed to have gone crazy, and spends his days incessantly bobbing his head up and down, to the point where the elephants at the zoo die, on average, at an age that is half their natural lifespan. This is not educational, and is not the right message to send to our children, or to any of the people of this wonderful city. We are in the midst of the greatest economic recession of modern times. It would be absurd, in this disastrous, in this disastrous economic environment, to allocate $30 or $40 million, plus annual upkeep costs exceeding $1 million a year, to a zoo exhibit that is inhumane and of no real educational value. The San Francisco and Sacramento zoos have closed their elephant exhibits. Santa Barbara is phasing out its exhibit. It is time for Los Angeles to be the progressive city we all know it can be, and shut down the LA Zoo's elephant enclosure.
Thank you very much. And Laura Serene. This is the last of those who are against the exhibit. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Doyle. What I submit to you is that we're, what we're missing from all these reports is actually an analysis of the effect of spending so much money on one exhibit for one species at the zoo, and how it is affecting other exhibits, other projects at the zoo. In fact, it's indeed a critical funding and adversely affecting other zoo projects and the overall quality of the zoo. The elephant exhibit is using the entire amount of the Prop A funds and about 20% of Prop CC funding. In fact, exhibits specifically called for in Prop CC, Rainforest of the Americas and Reptile and Insect Center, are now in trouble due to budget and funding issues. Yet at the same time, the budget for the Pachyderm Forest, which was not specifically identified in any bond language, nor voted on by the public, has actually been increased. This year, the mayor's new budget cut funding from the, I'm sorry, the mayor's new budget cut funding from the Rainforest exhibit, to the point where it may have to be shelved until sufficient funds are available. In the Intersectum Reptile Center, they've actually had to value-engineer or delete some of the exhibit areas and replace that with landscape areas. Can I just mention one more thing, very quickly? Thank you. The Pachyderm Forest budget was recently increased, in part using savings, MICLA savings from the Golden Monkey Project, which, of course, as we heard, holds no, holds no golden monkeys. And I would like to ask, is Glaza going to pick up the tab for those MICLA funds?
Thank you very much. Carol.
I'm Carol Bottacio.
Thank you, Carol Bottacio. Thank you.
Difficult. However altruistic, caring, and sympathetic the zoo administration, and staff, and supporters are, the fact remains that the planned elephant exhibit is still considered by elephant experts to be woefully inadequate, as far as space is concerned. Billy has suffered way too long in solitude and in a tiny enclosure, and his neurotic, continual head bobbing is sure evidence of his misery. He needs to be sent immediately to a more natural habitat sanctuary, where he can live out what life is left to him, in the company of others of his kind with vast territory in which to roam. Too many elephants have met premature deaths when contained in too small and lonely environments. If the zoo feels it must continue the construction of this enclosure, I'm sure there are any number of other zoo animals that would greatly benefit from that space, though it be ridiculously limited for elephants. If the zoo feels it must go forward with its captive breeding program for elephants, there must be miserable captive elephants wasting away in circuses and exhibits who could fill that bill. But Billy must now be freed to a sanctuary. There's just no other humane choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Hi, Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura Sarason from Los Angeles, speaking for Voice for the Animals Foundation. Fifteen elephants have died at the LA Zoo. Most never lived past the age of 20. Elephants have a natural lifespan of 60 to 70 years. Billy is held in solitary confinement, where he spends his days repetitively bobbing his head up and down in a tiny zoo pen. Sending him to a sanctuary will, will enable him to start a new life in a natural habitat, where he will have the space and natural conditions that he so desperately needs. Please reallocate these funds in this trying economic time for something else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the cards that I have of those who are against the exhibit. I do have someone for general comments. Anthony Manzano.
My name is Anthony Manzano, and I have some creative alternatives. The entire zoo is an exhibit, and it should not be selective with just the elephant exhibit. You have to have a visionary alternative, and the visionary alternative uses may be a strong consideration. You can, have to consider, will costs ever be recovered? We have to find a more economical utilization of public funds, perhaps putting more police patrols out on the streets, library computers, or street repairs, perhaps even additional zoo enhancements. But an innovative, great option would be the Los Angeles Wildlife Survival Center. This would be case-specific health concerns for endangered animal treatment. You can educate mature students, and, and treat, teach them to be specialized veterinarians. This would be recognized worldwide as a nature center for care. You can generate revenue and tend to the exotic wildlife animals throughout the world by offering them cures, surgeries, and injuries. We've solved all the problems: education, innovative nature and care, revenue, global emphasis located here in Los Angeles, a positive environmental conscious society, and the perception of captive will be transferred to revitalizing life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'm going to call on those who are for the project, and again, Charles Dillingham, is that correct?
Mr. Dillingham is going to defer and speak tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ruben Chavez, Catherine Butts Warwick, and Alex Datig.
My name is Ruben Chavez. I live in Lincoln Heights. I've been living there since 1947, on and off. Anyway, I'd like to give you an example of a zoo that has successfully have a elephant breeding program. The San Diego Zoo and Wild Animal Park have long, made a long-term commitment to the elephants when it imported a family group from Switzerland in 2003. This group was designated to be culled, killed by the park rangers in Switzerland, as part of their effort to manage the elephant population that had overgrown their national park. The San Diego Zoo stepped in, spending millions of dollars to save these animals and bring them to San Diego. Okay, the San Diego Zoo and Wild Animal Park disagreed with those people opposing, like here today, and they moved forward, saving these elephants, managing a herd of the Wild Animals Park that has now produced four babies. They are currently expanding their commitment. You know, they say they're not going to castrate Billy, putting him over there with a bunch of bachelors. What's the difference?
Good afternoon, Councilman Labonge. My name is Catherine Warwick, and if, with all due respect, I'd like to address my comments, if I might, to Councilman Cardenas.
Well, I think you should address it to the chair. That's the protocol.
Yes, sir.
So you could say whatever you want, and everybody can hear it.
I urge all members of the city council, in considering this matter, to honor their professional staff, their in-house veterinarians who have for years given professional and excellent care to the animals, the folks who are planning the Asian elephant breeding program to be the only one in the United States. Billy is a male elephant. He will not be turned loose in a sanctuary, but he will be exceedingly valuable to the breeding program that is only going to be available in Los Angeles if this enclosure is completed. And I also want to say to all members of the council that it is extremely important to recognize the commitment of the citizens of this community through Glaza to fund this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Councilman Labonge.
Good afternoon, everybody. First, I'd like to say I support the, the elephant exhibit. I think it is a worthy undertaking. I think it's a wonderful idea. And I just, I just remember when I was a child, I went to the Egypt Zoo, and I remember I saw my first African-American, African-American, African elephant, sorry. My bad. I probably saw my first African-American there, too. But, you know, the first African elephant is what I saw there, and I remember the amount of respect I had. And that's all I remember, is how much respect I had for this elephant, and I never forgot the look in the elephant's eyes as a child. And I don't know how many people have visited the LA Zoo as of late to go see this elephant, but it's all parents and kids. And the elephant is well taken care of. I believe that he deserves a chance to inhabit this new environment, and, and I believe it is in his best interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather Shields, Betty Dunbar, Janika Jones.
My name is Heather Shields, and I am a resident of the city of Los Angeles, and I have a voice. I voted along with 79% of the rest of LA for the zoo bond measure that provided a portion of the money needed to build the new elephant enclosure. I had a voice. In 2006, when the issue of the new exhibit came up, and city council voted 13 to 2 in favor of allowing the construction of the exhibit to continue, I again had a voice. On Monday, on the steps of City Hall, I stood next to the workers and the trade and labor unions, who would be directly impacted by the decision to not move forward with this project. They have a voice. I depend upon government officials to take action on issues that are voted on by the people, for the people. It is the foundation that has built our great democratic nation. It has been proven that the city will lose money if the zoo is not allowed to continue construction on this exhibit. Glaza has taken on the cost of financing the MICLA funds, so the city's general fund will not pay for anything. 1,000 jobs will be created if this project is allowed to move forward, something that is so desperately needed when the unemployment rate in California is soaring over 9%. Please hear the voices of the people and those who will be directly impacted by the decision that you make today. I am Heather Shields, and I am a resident of the city of Los Angeles, and this is my voice.
Thank you very much.
(applause)
Thank you very much.
I'm Betty Dunbar. I have been a member of GLAZA for 30 years. I've been a zoo gorch for 40 years, and this is the right thing to do, to finish this exhibit. It's been planned for many years. A lot of people have worked hard on it. We have professional people and experts who agree that it should be finished. I beg you to finish Billy's exhibit and let a conservation group start. In case there's a catastrophe in the wild, every Asian elephant could be wiped out. It's time for us to start working on this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Janika Jones. I'm a zoo gardener. I don't know how much space it takes to make an elephant happy, but this is what I do know. When I started working at the zoo 10 years ago, I spent my first year trying not to notice what was going on around me. I tried to focus on my job creating comfortable, interesting habitats for the animals. I still focus on these things, but now I do it with conviction and pride. And whenever I question my convictions as a zoo convert, I remember the young boy who hit me with a barrage of questions one day about my complicity in participation in the horrors of captivity. As he spoke, I was thinking, I have no idea how to have this discussion with a 10-year-old who's obviously convinced that I'm some kind of animal slave trader. Suddenly, before I had to come up with an appropriate response, the boy stopped midstream, and looking over my shoulder from the step where he stood, he said, "Wow, look, giraffes." And he was gone. Thank you. I hope that you let the Los Angeles Zoo continue to improve Billy's home and his life.
David Kirsch, Karen Polly, and Raoul Macias.
Good afternoon. My name is David Kirsch. I'm here on behalf of the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee to urge you to ensure the project proceeds as planned. The issue was straightforward for us: jobs, jobs, jobs. Well, I just take a look at the front page of the L.A. Times today. Over 60,000 jobs lost in just one day, 75,000 in front of the Daily News. We cannot afford to put more people out of work. We cannot afford to take a pass on this project. There are construction companies, including union contractors, who have already spent time and money to bid on this project and who are anxious for it to move forward. The Elephant Exhibit Project creates the type of jobs we should all be proud and eager to support. These are good-paying, prevailing wage and union jobs with health care and benefits and pensions, as well as apprenticeship training opportunities for our youth to have a chance at a rewarding and productive career in the construction trades. These are jobs that stimulate the economy and keep our economies strong and safe. We cannot afford to let this opportunity pass up. Let's keep the project on track. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Councilman Labange. My name is Karen Polly. I'm an animal keeper at the Los Angeles Zoo, as I have been for 28 years now. It is frustrating to me that when something happens at the Los Angeles Zoo, it is so scrutinized and the facts are so often exaggerated. Yet, if the same thing were to happen at a sanctuary, you might not even hear about it. But before the city council votes on whether or not the construction of the new exhibit elephant habitat at the Los Angeles Zoo should continue, I'd like you to please consider these facts. Only three elephants have died at the Los Angeles Zoo since 1994. That's three elephants in the past 14 years. By comparison, since January of 2008, just within the last one year, five elephants have died between the two sanctuaries. At PAWS alone, four elephants have died, one in January 2008, April 2008, September 2008, and most recently, less than a week ago, in January of 2009. Additionally, at the Elephant Sanctuary in Tennessee, an elephant died just recently on January 11, 2009. Some of these were also very young elephants. And if I could please finish, it would not be fair for me to reflect on the cause of these deaths at sanctuaries, because personally, I do not know what the facts surrounding these deaths were. I am just stating these facts, so that you will be better off informed. Please, keep Billy where he belongs, with the family he already knows and the family he's about to meet.
My name is Raoul Macias. On behalf of 2,500 kids in northeast Los Angeles, I'm going to ask you please to support keep Billy in the zoo. My kids, most of them, they never seen an elephant, besides in the movie on the TV. To tell you this, I asking them, I don't come along and make something, no. I asking them, why you think about this situation? Most of them, they don't see why we have to close the zoo for the elephant. Then, please, for the youth in northeast Los Angeles, help us to keep the elephant here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My young soup, Nancy Smerly, and Daniela Carmona.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilmember Labange. My name is Myung Su Seok. I'm the Development Director for the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor. I'm here on behalf of our Executive Secretary, Treasurer, Maria Elena Dorazo, who unfortunately couldn't be here today in person to make the supportive statement for the zoo project. Our reasoning for supporting this project is a very simple one. We have a lot of our members right now in the construction trade that is anxious to get on the job and finish the job that they started. And while this is all debate is going on amidst one of the worst economic recessions that we faced as a nation, we are seeing in some parts of our trade up to 30% of our members who are officially out of work. And this is a very dramatic development that's been happening, probably last three to four months, a very dramatic rise in unemployment. There is about 300 good union and prevailing wage jobs that's connected to this, and we are anxious to make sure that 300 of these working families have a way to support themselves through this economic crisis. We support the project, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Nancy Smerly, and I had not planned on speaking, but when Councilman Cardenas threw out another one of those numbers that is thrown around by the anti-Pachyderm Forest group that is, ill-represents what actually took place and is completely inaccurate fictitious, I felt I needed to stand up. He quoted 63 elephants having died in North America. If you go to the PETA website, they name every one of those elephants when and where it died. If you take statistically and break down those numbers, you'll find that over 80% of those elephants were aged 37 or older when they died. The realistic lifespan of an elephant is about 40 years, just like a human is about 70 now. It's not 120 for people, it's not 70 for elephants, it's 40. So the vast majority of those elephants lived within a year or two of their average life expectancy. They were well cared for, well treated, and that number should not be thrown out as a statement of fact when the facts that surround it are excluded from that statement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing me speak. My name is Daniela Carmona, and I am a proud animal keeper at the Los Angeles Zoo. I'd just like to say first off that Billy is in captivity. Living at a sanctuary, Billy will still be in captivity. I was going to shout out some facts. You've heard it all. You've heard the accusations, you've heard the lies. We've spoken the truth. We have nothing to hide. Everyone knows about the past. Everyone has a past. More than half of our so-called opposing animal experts have, with all due respect, imperfect animal pasts. But I speak to you as the future. Give us a chance. What is everyone afraid of? We are constantly criticized for having outdated exhibits. Give us a chance. We're trying to make a beautiful, world-class exhibit, and yet we are being prohibited from doing so. Give us a chance. We have been accountable for what has happened in the past. We are positive we can do well in the future. We are a world-class zoo. We are run by world-class keepers. We have world-class elephants. Please help us give him a world-class exhibit.
Nicholas Gutierrez. And this is the last card that I have in front of me. Has anyone missed an opportunity to speak? Okay, Nicholas Gutierrez.
All right, well, good morning. And I would just like to talk a little bit about accuracy in reporting. You've heard the numbers, 15 elephants thrown out there, ranging to in excess of that. If you look at the actual elephants, and you look at the ages when some of these elephants have died, on the website that's been supported by Voice for the Animals, they claim two elephant deaths that died in 1940 and in 1947. The Los Angeles Zoo was not built until 1966. This directly contradicts the accuracy of the information that they are bringing to bear against the Los Angeles Zoo. If we can't trust the numbers that they're quoting, how can we trust the rest of the information that they're presenting to us? And to speak a little bit about what kind of life would be for Billy up at the PAWS Sanctuary, we already have an idea of what that will be like. There's an elephant there right now who's already living it. His name is Nicholas. He's 15 years old, and for the rest of his natural life, he will be in an enclosure by himself. He's already been isolated. Let's not do that to Billy. He will have companions, he will have calves, and he will have the loving support of all the people you see here before you who are a part of the Los Angeles Zoo. So let this project go forward.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I have no other cards before me at all, so I'm going to conclude the hearing. Excuse me, Mr. Cardenas.
I'm sorry, this is, I wanted to submit a report.
Certainly. Okay, thank you very much. I think the one thing that's absolutely important, and I understand people's passion on it, I know that absolutely everybody loves elephants in this room, everybody who loves elephants, who has come here to that, everybody believes they're doing the right thing. It's up to the city council tomorrow to make the decision on what is the right thing for the future. It's up to the city council of Los Angeles to believe what they have in front of them. I certainly hope they believe in the people who work at the zoo. I certainly hope they believe in GLAZA. I certainly hope they believe in those who have spent their professional careers committed or volunteers as the many docents that are there. I appreciate the passion from people who feel strongly the other way. But as committee chair and as someone who's been involved with this for many years, and I was just going to pull out my GLAZA card, because I didn't know how long I've been a member, but I got a check to see it's there. I know I'm KCT since 1976, but I think all these things are important institutions to support as we go forward in our day. And tomorrow will be a day that we will each have a chance and an opportunity to express ourselves again. I'm going to recommend to the committee chair that there be, obviously, a public comment period as required by law, that there be one minute so as many people could voice their concerns, and that a decision be made that hopefully affirms what this committee chair wants, that this project to go forward, that the education and conservation program that exists at the zoo be enhanced, and that a chance, I could say to everybody, I remember what everybody said, but to the chance and the opportunity of this generation to do what is right in zoology and conservation and education. There's no cards in front of me at this time. I want to thank the city attorney. I especially want to thank the CAO's office. I want to thank the city engineer's office, and I want to thank the zoo department, its commissioner, its GLAZA board members, and all who are here. And I want to thank Mr. Cardenas as well, and those who also testified. This committee is adjourned. Thank you.